Can you read it? Meeting is now in order of the Berkeley County Commission. Are there any items from the public? Yes, sir. Please come forward and state your name, please.
Good morning. My name is Ken Madsen. A Berkeley County resident, taxpayer, and quite vocal, as some of you know in local politics. I'm here this morning to discuss the county's stance on hiring a taxpayer-funded lobbyist to represent the county at our state capitol. There are a couple of questions. I know you may not be able to respond, but hopefully afterwards we can meet up and answer some of the questions that someone may have. The first is, did you advertise for this position? Many could not find the application on the website or the county Facebook page, and when they went back, as far as, they went back as far as January and couldn't find it, unless it was under another name or something that the job description or the title was labeled as something else. So hopefully that could be, my question could be answered. So, since there are no other applications and the advertisement may appear to be faulty, I would suggest for the sake of perception and filing date should be extended and put on all the county's social and website accounts or social media forums. So to get down to it, when running for election, did any of the commissioners run for, please vote for me as I will hire a lobbyist at 20,000 plus to represent Berkeley County at our state capitol? Did any Berkeley County delegate or senator run on how best to represent Logan or Putnam County? Did anyone run on, I want to raise the sales tax as 1%? I can say the answer to that would be no. There are obligations for those positions, and you represent the county that you've been voted into, the delegates and/or senators, and some of them do do some certain counties, but they do represent the citizens of that particular county as well. Berkeley County Commission represents the county. So our stance, many of people's stance is that it is your job to represent the county to our local delegation and to the state capitol. So there were some instances where decisions were made and by some former county commissioners that if they don't like the decision, well, you can vote us out. Well, there's no recall election, and the citizens have to wait two, four, six years to be able to voice their opinion in regards to voting you out. The damage is already done, and that's not really fair to the citizen to have that type of excuse. Not saying that any of you have done that, it's just a stance, and that's been kind of the perception of the county commission at this time as some citizens out in the county. But what I did hear is that I want to represent our county and be fiscally responsible with the taxpayer money. As for delegates and senators, they want to represent the Eastern Panhandle at our state capitol and do what's best for the people living in those areas. So the question is, how do they do that? How do you do that? Politicking and negotiation is what we've been doing since the foundation of our country. That's what made our constitution, that's what made our states, that's what made states' constitution, that's what made bills, et cetera. I hope those who ran for office knew what was expected of them or became aware after elected. There were obligations to these positions. Reshare succumb to the county council pleading for money for hiring new officers, equipment, et cetera. Fire department taxes for ambulance fees, et cetera. How many cops can we have put on the street with $240,000? How much more equipment or repairs for fire and emergency business and/or tax relief to the citizens? What do we tell our citizenry when an emergency call was late because we didn't have the personnel? That we did not have the money for those personnel, but we did, but we did spend your taxpayer money for a lobbyist? First, I've been hearing from some commissioners that they don't have the time to travel to our state capitol and/or lobbyists introduce, or their lobbyists introducing them to delegates and senators he needed to talk to. Craig Blair cannot have done this, Eric Householder, John Hardy, Jason Barrett, Charlie Trump, Patricia Rucker, Paul F. Sinosa, they don't know any people they could introduce you to people, they've been there a very, very long time. What is fiscally responsible is people might accept paying any of you room and board and travel to the county, to do the county's business to get our message across, maybe even taking turns. If one person go there a couple of weeks, the next commissioner can go up there a couple of weeks. With today's technology, Berkeley County and/or board meetings, which can be done, if you may miss some here in person, can be done via Zoom or in other means if applicable. I know the Zoom meeting is kind of like a talk if that's still good in regards to voting on county business. I may be wrong on that, but that's an issue that some people brought up. Second, we have been hearing from local delegates, senators, and county commissioners meet to discuss upcoming legislative sessions. Jason Barrett has stated on the radio, the Eastern Panhandle delegation meets at least once during a meeting session to discuss issues, even meeting with county commissioners before they go up. I could presume some conversations of bills that benefit the Eastern Panhandle. Some delegates state they don't have the time to review every bill during regular session. How many delegates and senators do we have to represent the Eastern Panhandle? How many are on the various committees? No one talks to each other or gives a heads up on bills that have a beneficial or detrimental effect on Berkeley County. No one talks to the bill's creators or co-sponsors on what bill, what the bills do. We must, we then must ask the question, what is the job of the delegate, senator, or county commissioner? What did they run on? Who do they represent? Are not the goals of the Berkeley County delegation the same as the county commissions? My big question, the big question is thus, do we not have legislators in power positions in the Eastern Panhandle who should be looking out for our interest instead of paying a taxpayer lobbyist to do it for them? You must find the time to represent the people you asked to, you vote, who you voted, you asked to vote you in. I don't have the time to represent you fully is not a great retort to the taxpayers and the voters. Now onto the taxpayer-funded lobbyists doing the job of the county commissioners. You must first look on how can a taxpayer-funded lobbyist influence other delegates and/or senators who do not rely on Berkeley County voters to get, to get elected? If I don't rely on Berkeley County to be elected to Logan County, why should I care about what Berkeley County wants? So, do we look at dinners and receptions? Reception that a local delegate here stated, really no business conducted there, it's more of a meet and greet. Let's get to dinners. My FOIA request uncovers some interesting information, one being a dinner engagement with Patricia, with Senator Patricia Rucker. Not only did Berkeley County pay for her dinner, but also of her two family members as well. It's hard to fathom that Senator Rucker is so hard up on cash that we did not have, that Berkeley County had to use taxpayer money for her dinner, but also two family members who do not vote in the legislature. Craig Blair and John Hardy was also taken out for dinner. Those aforementioned have no idea what will benefit their constituents which are part of Berkeley County or have no clue about talking to legislators who are voting for bills that affect Berkeley County and/or talked to you before going on and hoping to contact with you while they're up in Charleston. Again, why cannot you and our local elected leadership do this? Who do we blame when bills that would benefit Berkeley County not reach the floor of the House or Senate or wrote it down? The delegate or senator? The county commission or lobbyist? If this is lobbyist, then that is not fair to them, or was that the point? Someone to blame rather than electing the officials doing the job that he stills are responsible for doing. If the commissioner and/or delegate senator cannot do that, then they need to deeply reflect on why they ran for the position, or if they stepped down, that they cannot do it. Bills that we cannot confirm, bills that we can or cannot confirm the lobbyist was solely responsible for, since we know the lobbyist cannot vote, who was responsible for it? Was it introductions? We answered that one. Was it the, knowing the bills coming through the pipeline, we knew the answer to that, to who's responsible for that? Was it dinners and receptions? We know of other avenues for this, for that, rather than paying taxpayer money to a lobbyist who delegates and is going to dine out to have reception with refreshments. So again, who gets the credit? Does the Super Bowl ball holder get a team Super Bowl ring if they win the Super Bowl? They were on the team. But how much did they contribute to the game? I know I called a few delegates, senators about bills. Should I get a taxpayer money stipend for that time? Did my conversation make them vote for a bill that benefited Berkeley County? Possible solutions. We have five commissioners. This gives five elected officials in Berkeley County the option of going to the legislative session. This can be done in turns, or if one of the commissioners have time to remain at the state capitol to do work with our delegation for bills to improve and help our county. In all my talks with numerous county citizens, they would rather pay you for travel lodging than out of the taxpayer-funded lobbyists.
Mr. Maston, I'm going to ask you to go ahead and get this.
I will, at the very end.
If you would, please, thank you.
Last, make public the topics the county sees as essential and what the lobbyist is supposed to champion. This way, the taxpayer can know what was or was not done and who will be to blame. Thank you much for your time. I will be open, catch me offline later today or later this week or have any conversations going. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Mr. Maston, if you would just leave a phone number with Penny, and I'll be happy to reach out to you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion- Okay, motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second all in favor, say aye. Aye. As have purchase order law. Were any questions on the purchase order law? You can't let Tracy off too easy this morning. If you find a little something, that'd be fine. Okay. Internal budget revision. Penny, you give us an overview on that, please.
Yes, you have one internal budget review received from the sheriff, from the sheriff's tax office. He has channeled, what, $109,900 from line 001 to line 3 for wages and salaries to line 108 for overtime to work on mail when they're busy time. Mr. Wine has checked this and approved it, and there's a bunch of these budgets that have this.
Thank you. I know that I had received a call about checking on somebody's status that they had paid their bill, but they hadn't received the receipt. So I went down, there's tubs of, there's a tremendous amount of stuff for them to go through. Okay, we have a change of status received from Randy Lilly, the emergency management director for Candace Schaefer-Hormand. She is receiving a salary of adjustment of taking more additional responsibilities. Her salary will go from 34,515 to 37,970 effective October 1, 2023. And status, change of status received from Mike Lang, the court martial, the chief court martial for Carroll Marshall. He is receiving a step increase, his salary will go from $40,678 to $43,118, and that will be effective October 1, 2023. Have a letter of resignation from Brian Mann. That's effective September 22, 2023, out of the planning office. And a letter of resignation received from the day report center, Anthony Gonzalez, and that will be effective September 19, 2023.
How long did Brian Mann work for? Two weeks?
Maybe a little bit longer than that. Wasn't much longer. He actually was able to return to his former employment with a substantial increase in pay and stuff like that, so.
Well, I heard it because you didn't like working inside.
Well, that wasn't his most favorite thing, is kind of used to being out in the field. So I understand it also. The commission meeting managed for September 14th, everybody was present. Commission calendars, obviously we're here today. At 5:00 PM, the ambulance authority and at 5:00 PM, the library board will meet today. And then
Museum is what?
The museum, okay. And on October 2nd at 6:00 PM will be the planning commission. And Tuesday on the 3rd of October will be the sewer district at 5:00 and stormwater at 6:00.
How's that museum board doing?
This will be our second meeting. So the last meeting, we elected the officers and got all that going on. This will be our second meeting. Seems we have the right direction. It's our exact, for proof. I know we opened the bids, but I think we're getting started yet. Gary's not here, he could probably attest to that better.
Okay, and board and commission calendars. Mr. Boyd, do you have anything to report on?
Yeah, last week I was at
Excuse me. Excuse me. Okay, and the cancel check request received from the clerk's finance office. Okay. All right, and motion to approve consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second all in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you. Mr. Hess, you have some exonerations for us this morning?
Morning.
Morning, sir.
Yeah, I got a couple this week. First, I have personal property. We had five exonerations. We had to bring on two this morning for correction. And for reasons that's listed there, all five of those totaled up to $489.42.
Motion to approve those exonerations for the personal property in an amount of $489.42?
So move.
Second.
It's probably moving second all in favor, say aye. Aye. And you have another one for real estate office there?
Yeah, we do. We have six real estate exonerations we corrected this past week. And for those reasons that's listed also. Total of all six of those is $3,757.23.
Okay. Motion to accept the exoneration as presented for the amount of, well, real estate for the amount of $3,757.23?
So move.
Second.
It's probably moving second all in favor, say aye. Aye. As have, thank you, Mr. Hess.
That's all ahead?
Very good, thank you. Okay, we're running a few minutes ahead on the on the bid opening for the drone package. So I guess we can Okay, okay. Okay, come on up, it's All right, thank you.
An award acceptance for the West Virginia Court Security Fund fiscal year 2024. Funding source, West Virginia Court Security or the Judicial Center. It's 12 months from 7/1, 23 to 6/34. Total state award is $43,000. Total match zero. It's going to pay for nine Motorola APX 4000 radios and microphones with AES equipment, $40,435. Two desktop charging stations for $1,030. And nine Bolo stick for barricades for $1,485.
So you want us to go ahead and approve the
Yeah, we've already been awarded it.
Now, I'm sorry, I was not paying attention to you.
Well.
I was busy opening up this and trying to find the right document that I need. So were you speaking on the drone itself?
No, this is different. This is the court security grant.
That's where I fall.
Yeah, for 43.
I make a motion to accept the grant.
I make a motion to accept the grant. FYI 24, West Virginia Court Security Grant.
Thank you. Thank you. I apologize. I got ahead of my, actually I was behind myself, so. It's been properly moved and second to accept the grant for fiscal year 24 court security. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, yeah.
And that's the resolution to give the president the authorization?
President, everyone signs this, that's the resolution to give the president authorization of the grant. So you motion to approve the resolution.
Yeah. I've got to, I've got to get, there we go. Yeah, I got it. I've just got too much junk up here.
Mr. President, I'm going to accept the resolution authorizing court security fund grant 24 CSO2.
I'll second.
It's properly moved and second all in favor of the resolution for the West Virginia Court Security grant, signature's out, saying aye. Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
He'll do better next time.
We got, we got five minutes. You want to do meeting reports?
We kept it light.
I brought my meeting
Which one?
Do you need to do the bid recommendation for the outfitting for beer?
Yes.
We have a bid recommendation for the breeder for Mr. Wine for the law enforcement truck outfitting equipment. You opened bids, received two bids, one from Priority Install for the amount of $41,096. The other from Paul Public Safety Company for $43,037.12. Mr. Wine is saying that both vendors have met the qualifications and specifications and recommend the commission create a low bid amount of $41,096 to Priority Install.
Okay. You've heard a request from the county administrator wanting to award the bid to Priority Install out of Mount Arion, Maryland for the amount of $41,096. I need a motion to accept that.
So move. Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and second for the approval of Priority Install for the outfitting equipment for the police pursuit vehicle. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you. Okay, so I guess I, even though we're two minutes ahead, this will be our bid opening for the drone. We go back to that. Back several months ago, there was a request for the purchase of a public safety drone package from our emergency management office. And we do have publication of certification as, certification publication as Mr. Davis would readily advise us of that from September 18th of 2023. Let's see if I can find the bottom line here. There was only one bid received. And the
This was also advertised on social media on our website as well. Direct mail to your bank account as well.
Okay. The bid that we have is from a company called Adorama. A D O R A M A. The quote total is $32,242.4. And not only with the drone itself, but it also includes training and the case as well. So I know that we do have a licensed drone operator. Randy is a licensed drone operator.
Is this that drone they were talking about a lot over the river?
Yes, yeah. And it also has the thermal ability as well.
You already have the drone, right?
No, no. Now IT has a drone.
Oh, okay.
But this is newer technology and probably a little stronger.
Yeah, how big is it?
I don't know. I haven't seen it.
Tiny and some of them, you know.
I would imagine this was a little bit bigger if it could do river rescue.
Well, the only thing
It drops buoys or whatever.
No, it's what's designed to be able to do is take like a line across the river where they can tie off onto a rope and then pull the rope across. That's, hopefully that's intended. In more, the screens are much larger to give you much more visibility. You know, they're very useful. When I was working, we used them several times, so pretty neat technology.
This is, this will be for, oh, yeah. But they can loan it out to other agencies if they need it?
Well, they can provide it, you know. It needs to have a licensed operator with it. But, you know, Randy, you know, if sheriff's office or somebody of that nature needs it, certainly. Or any other fire rescue agency, you know. Hopefully even in the tri-county area would need it, it would be available to them. Okay. Let's go bring us to the end of our business for today. And are there any other items from the public? Hearing none. Mr. Barnard.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move to recess.
We are in recess.
And this is an absolute record.
We are recessed, thank you.
As short as me and I have ever been.
Are you coming back into business later? This is a recess